Alright, I am here. Sorry that I am a little bit late. Ran into some problems setting up the computer and various things. So I'm actually still finishing this up. So hopefully, everyone who was gonna show up comes back. But, let's go ahead and get this set up. And then we'll go ahead and get started. Alright, one more thing to fix is the... Uh oh. Other thing to fix is the lighting. Okay, cool. Alright, let's go ahead and get started. My name is Rob Shams. I am the owner of Reason Prep. I do all the videos, the courses, the materials, all that good stuff. Today I'm gonna answer any questions you might have on the SAT and ACT, SAT subject tests, math, chemistry, literature, general questions about college admissions, anything like that. So, let's go ahead and get started. I have some questions that were sent to me ahead of time. So we will start with those. If you wanna send questions, you can either email ask@reasonprep.com or you can, you can see the email right below, or you can just type it in chat. Alright, here we go. Alright, so first question. Let that a little smaller. Alright. So this question, whoa, that's a little bit too small. This question comes from an actual SAT. So if you haven't done this one, I recommend not paying much attention to this. But it's about vocab and context. Okay, so here we go. Often find that on words in context questions on the SAT, "I understand the meanings of all the answer choices, but I still get stuck between two choices and end up choosing the wrong one. What do you suppose the reason is for this?" So the example you have here is, "But change the conversation to food and suddenly efficiency doesn't look good. Conventional industrial agriculture has become incredibly efficient on a simple land-to-food basis." And so here are choices. I can easily eliminate B and C. But to me, straightforward and easy are synonyms. And I don't understand why the correct answer is A. So in some ways, they're synonyms, but not always. The issue here is that words don't just have one definition. They can have many definitions, some which overlap, some which are different. So straightforward and easy can have some different definition when you're talking about things being easy to do, like their difficulty. So they can be easy or they can be straightforward. But there's another definition of straightforward, which is mimicking or standing in for how simple is being used here. Because you might also say that simple could also mean like easy to do. And that's true. They all overlap in that way. But simple and straightforward have another definition that's operative here. Straightforward and simple are also about the complexity of something, which certainly could be easy as a result of it being simple. But it's about whether is something complex or whether it is simple, right? It's that distinction. So straightforward is that same idea of being not complex, being simple, direct, being limited to a single factor as was being discussed here. The whole point of the sentence is to say that it's incredibly efficient on a land, on just a land-to-food basis. Just only, simply, straightforwardly, in a non-complex way if you're only looking at the factor of a land-to-food basis. So it's nothing to do with difficulty, nothing to do with ease of understanding or how hard something is. That's not the realm of words we're in, which is why D is not the answer. But A is the better answer because we're talking about simplicity versus complexity. And that's the realm we're in. So the, going back to your original question, what is the reason for this? There are other definitions at play. It's not often just one definition that's gonna be the consideration. It's gonna be a word, can have many different definitions, many different ideas. And so you need to capture all of that when you are thinking about what choice might be best. Alright, so let's go into some more questions here. "I want to know which one is more important, the SAT or the ACT? No difference. Not, not one is more important than the other. Pick one and do it, and just pick the one that you're better at or that you like more. Colleges will more or less accept them equally. So there is no one that's more important than the other." "What is the best way to improve quickly on the reading section? Unfortunately, there's no way to improve quickly. I mean, it depends, I guess, what you mean by quickly. If you mean like in a week, really hard. If you mean a month, a little bit easier, but still kind of hard. If you mean like in two months, maybe a bit more doable." So quickly depends on your timeframe. Usually for reading, you're talking about in the frame of weeks or months rather than days or weeks. Otherwise, there's really unfortunately no way to improve quickly because it's all about the skill of reading, right? Think about the reading you've done from the beginning of the time you started reading until now. All of that is that foundation upon which you're drawing. So literally, I don't know, a decade of reading coming into play here? So how do you change that quickly? You can't. So what you have to do is focus on the particular passages, the question types, the strategies, the trap answers. Really learn this test as best you can. Learn the best strategies for approaching the passages and approaching the questions as best you can. And then use that as a basis to see if you can bump up your score quickly. I think a lot of times with reading, you can improve quickly if there's some inefficiencies that you can iron out. Most people though will hit a wall at some point. And that's when you get into the slog of having to just work and practice consistently. And so yeah, there's no real quick way, but there is a consistent effort way where you wanna learn the strategies and tips and then continue building your reading comprehension skills. "How would you recommend getting started for the SAT Math 2 subject tests? I'm hoping to get 800." First thing to do is take a practice test, a real SAT 2 subject test timed. Take it timed, score it, see where you're at. If you're at a 650, then you've got a lot of work to do. If you're at a 760, then you're pretty close. So it's kind of figuring out where you're at. Then you need to start accruing a list or compiling a list of the topics that give you the most trouble. The subject test in Math 2 is quite broad. It covers a lot of things, some of which you've covered, other things maybe not as much. But you need to figure out what stuff you need to learn and what you don't. So that's gonna be through practice tests essentially. Get yourself a good couple prep books. No major recommendations. I usually, I guess, recommend Princeton Review or Barons or even Dr. Chung's, though Dr. Chung's is sometimes a little bit too hard, I think, for the real thing. But get yourself a good couple practice books. Go through those practice tests, start compiling those topics, and then pursue resources to review those topics. Whether that might be Khan Academy or the prep books or tutoring or courses, whatever it might be. Start to learn those topics and continue taking practice tests. There's no real secret sauce here. There's no like secret activity that if you did, you'll get an 800. It's just the daily quotidian work of, I guess that's redundant, but the, the daily work of just working consistently, identifying your weaknesses, building on your strengths, and doing practice tests. That's really what it comes down to. "Alright, hi, I got my SAT scores. I got a 1300 with an 8, 6, 8. Very nice essay score by the way. I don't plan on taking it again. It's my third time, but you think the score is alright considering I'm also taking the ACT and aiming for 34 to 36? I took the ACT last time, got 28, but realistically I'm getting 36 and 35s." So, but whether the score is alright or not depends on what colleges you're applying to. 1300 can get you into some really nice colleges, so, universities. So I think in that respect, it's good. It just depends on your goal. Now, if your goal for the ACT is a 34 to 36, that's obviously in a different stratosphere than a 1300. Let me actually see how the 1300, what that compares to for an ACT. 1300, yeah, it's about 27. So it's pretty close. Maybe a 28 is a little bit better than the 1300. But they're comparable. So yeah, really nice foundation. If you're getting 36 and 35s on reading and English and ACT, that's awesome. If you can get that above a 28, that will be better than your 1300. And that'll just open up more opportunities for you. So I guess the, some way to sum this up is your 1300 and your 28 are more or less equivalent. They're both solid. If you can build on that to improve on the ACT above a 28, that will only help your chances to get into whatever schools you're applying to. "How can I easily remember the vocabulary which is needed?" Unfortunately, there is no way to easily remember vocabulary. I mean, if you think about it, there are tens of thousands of words that could appear on the test. There's no way to easily do it unfortunately. That's the challenge of the reading section. Kind of what I, goes back to what I said before about reading. Your reading ability goes back, if you're a native speaker, reading English to 10 years ago when you started learning to read. Your ability to speak goes back and your ability to understand language in general, vocabulary, comprehension, etc., goes back to when you were like two years old. So we're operating with long-term trends, long-term skills that you can't just change in a week or a month. Or it, it takes time. It takes consistent effort, at the very least consistent effort. In terms of how you can remember it, the main thing to do is flashcards. You have to do flashcard work, whether it's literal flashcards, an app, whatever you do, you have to do it that way. You can't just read word lists and think that's gonna matter, especially in the short term. You have to challenge yourself to produce the definition and then see if it matches the definition. If it does, you put that card aside for a while. If you missed it, you keep redoing that until you can get it. That's the really only way to learn it. But it's not easy. It takes time, consistent effort, and practice. "Does preparing for the SAT help in preparing for the PSAT? Asking because Khan Academy only has SAT practice, but I need to practice for the PSAT." Yes. So the SAT is a little bit harder than the PSAT, but the skills and the strategies and the question types definitely overlap. So yeah, the tests are basically, they're very similar. The PSAT reading and math sections are a little bit shorter, the content a little bit easier, but otherwise it's the same. So if you're prepping for SAT, you'll be in a good position to do the PSAT as well. Even with Khan Academy or whatever resources are out there. "I'm a sophomore and I am going to be a junior in September. I wanna know how I can study for the SAT in the future, give subject tests, and for getting a very good score." So very broad questions. There's no way I can answer this with any kind of helpfulness because, you know, how to study for the SAT subject test and get good scores? Very broad. If you wanna narrow the question a little bit more or a lot more, so I can give some more specific answers, that might help. In general though, I have a lot of information on all of these topics in my videos on YouTube, in my video courses on my website. So start there. I mean, everything I've got is there. It's in my, actually my website, my articles, my videos, everything. Start there. It goes through all of, you know, how to set up a study plan, how to get started on the SAT, things like that. "I'm not doing well on the ACT Science section. I know for reading, I have to read a ton of books. For science, what should I do? Where can I find experiments or graphs?" Yeah, this is tricky. The Science section is so weird and artificial in many ways that, unlike with, you know, reading, it's like, okay, go find, you know, some books to read and, and just read every day. Read magazine articles, read newspaper stories, read whatever, read consistently. I don't know if there's that much you can do for science in that regard in terms of an outside study. I mean, really in the end, it just comes down to if you like, you could read about science. I mean, that's one thing you can do. And that will help you with both actually. So you can find some books on science topics that you're interested in or read magazine articles or whatever, newspaper articles about science. That actually can do both for you. So that's actually a good idea now that I think about it. So what you can do is read for both, pick books, magazines, articles, etc., that deal with topics in science. And that can help you with your reading comprehension and your understanding of scientific principles. Beyond that, I don't know where you are in your test prep journey, how early you are, but you're paying attention, your science classes, very important obviously. But beyond that, then it's just doing practice science tests. That's what comes down to, doing practice science tests and then most importantly, spending the time after the test, reviewing every single question. Not just the ones you get right, not just the ones you get wrong, but even the ones you get right. Because you need to make sure, do I understand this question? Did I get it right for good reasons? Do I fully understand it? Do I understand the principles and the concepts involved? It should take you more time, especially at first, to review your tests than it does to take it. So if the Science section is 35 minutes, you should probably be spending at least 35 minutes reviewing it after, again, at first. As you get deeper into this, you don't have to spend as much time doing that. But especially at first, when you're learning, you really wanna take your time with each one. The biggest mistake students make is they just do practice tests after practice tests after practice tests. And they don't spend the time in between the tests learning. Because the tests don't teach you anything. Tests give you a sense of where you're at. It's reviewing the tests, it's doing practice sections, reading, videos, tutoring, courses, classes, working with friends. That's where you'll learn, not the test. The tests just give you a number. It's what you do with the number and it's what you do with the material afterwards that makes more of a difference. So that's, I think, the overall recipe for doing better on ACT Science. Should I take a subject, I guess you mean the subject test, when applying for engineering? Depends on the school, though I would probably imagine for engineering programs, you would be at least required to do a math and a science, my guess. So look in the schools that you're applying. Look at the engineering colleges and programs that you're looking at. They will tell you the requirements. Like I said, most certainly though, you will probably have to do at least a math, if not a math and a science of some kind. But again, look at the requirements and they'll tell you. "Does ACT focus less on vocab than SAT? Used to be that way. Now I think they're about the same in the sense that when you're doing reading passages, there's always gonna be vocab in them. The difference now is the old SAT used to have like crazy words that you would never see anywhere. It doesn't really do that anymore and the ACT never did that. But they both have, for example, the vocab in context questions, where we looked at one as the first question we talked about today, where you gotta find the right word in the context and see what word matches it. So that's kind of a vocab thing. And then the passages contain all kinds of vocab on their own, of course. So..." Hopefully it's not like buffering. I'm just getting a weird like warning. Anyway, let me know if the video is choppy at all. I don't, I don't think I can do anything to fix it, but... Yeah, might be okay. Anyway, um, does the ACT focus, okay, so yeah, vocab in context questions are very significant, uh, particular type of question. But yeah, you'll see vocab in the passages, but no more than you would on one test to the other. It's about the same. You're just not gonna see those crazy vocab words that you did on the, on the old SAT. "Which books are better for the SAT?" So I generally recommend books by tutors. So Eric Meltzer's books are good, Pone the SAT Math, also good. Anything by individual tutors I tend to find better because you get the tutor's individual spin on it. You know, Kaplan, Barons, Princeton Review, that stuff is alright, whatever. I think it's not as good for strategy or, or the way they put things together in many ways because it's very, you know, corporate. So, uh, yeah, stuff by individual tutors is the best. Khan Academy is a good resource. I have courses, of course, on my website that you might wanna check out. Link below right there. But yeah, anything by individual tutors, like I said, Meltzer, Erica Meltzer, generally well regarded and Pone the SAT Math, generally well regarded. But in the end, you should be using prep books only for instruction, not for practice tests. Practice tests should be only real SATs, at least as far as you can take that, until you run out. I've got a article on my site, a video about what to do when you run out of practice SATs, which you should check out. But really, your practice material should more or less come from real tests and you should use those books to learn. So learn grammar rules, learn math concepts, learn reading strategies, whatever it may be, not for practice tests. You basically should never use a Barons or Kaplan practice test for anything other than maybe, you know, reviewing certain concepts, but certainly not for a score or for reviewing anything. "Not able to finish the SAT on time. I've tried all strategies, none seem to work. What should I do? My present score is..." So I need more information, I think, because, uh, which sections are you not finishing in time? All of them? And by not finishing in time, how many questions do you not get to? Because a 1300 is not purely caused by running out of time, unless you're like really, really running out of time. So my first instinct would be to say the time isn't as much of the issue as other things are gonna be. And that actually those other things are themselves kind of causing the issues with time. So if you wanna follow up, give me more info. We can, we can talk more about that. But like I said, I don't think time is the main culprit here. There's other things going on. So it's not gonna be about trying to focus on your timing as much as it's gonna be focusing on other things, other skills, familiarity with a test that can help you get faster. "Recommend reading the questions first for the ACT reading. Should I start with the line reference questions or the questions?" So definitely start with line reference. Line reference questions first, then keyword questions. Those are specific questions where there's no line reference, but there's a word or words you can look for in the passage based on that question. So line reference, keyword, general questions, and then what I call time waster questions. I have videos on this. If you check out my ACT reading playlist on YouTube, I have a, I think I have a video on time waster questions. So check that out among other videos there. And I've got my reading course, which goes into more detail about this. But yeah, line reference, keyword, general, time waster. "Recently offered a research position with a professor at a local university. It sounds interesting to me. I'm considering it. Do you think it will help?" Yeah, it can help. I think what most important thing is, do what interests you. That's infinitely more important than what colleges think in some sense. Because if it interests you and you pursue it in a way that leads to something of value, whether maybe a, for example, depending on the research, depending on the timeline, if you get a, you know, a credit, an author, partial author credit or whatever on a paper, that's pretty awesome, not just for your own thing, but good for your college apps. So like if you find it interesting and you wanna do it and there's nothing else that you think you would wanna do more, then do it. But if there's something else you'd rather do, whatever it might be, pursue that. Pursue your interests, pursue something that you're passionate about. Because then when it comes time to explain yourself, so to speak, to colleges, write essays, for example, you've got something to say. Beyond like, oh, I did a bunch of these activities because they look good for colleges. No one wants to see that. Colleges don't wanna see people doing things just for applications. They wanna see real human beings. So if that interests you, who knows what kind of, for example, other opportunities may come out of that? Who knows what interested things you might be able to write about for college essays out of that experience, right? So you never really know where it will take you. And I think you'll get much more value out of something that interests you than anything else. And yeah, research positions, just generally speaking, depending on what it is and the, and the, you know, what your responsibilities are, it can be pretty good for your application as well. Especially if you're going into that field or you're interested in science or whatever it is, can definitely help. But in the end, it's up to you. I mean, do, do what you think is interesting. "Can I take the practice tests on Khan Academy because they're associated with the College Board? Or take the practice test in the real prep books?" So the, the real tests on Khan Academy are the tests in the prep book. They're actually the same. So if you'd like to buy, they've just released a new SAT prep book with eight tests in it. If you don't have that one, I recommend getting that. Those eight tests are the eight tests, full tests on Khan Academy. They're no different. The main question is what you should do with the questions, the practice questions on Khan Academy, how they break it up into topics. That's a different issue. And I've spoken about this in a lot of other streams. To summarize it quickly, math and writing probably okay to use. Reading, I would avoid for Khan Academy. Again, we're just talking about the questions in their little modules, not the full practice test that they provide, which are real tests, which had some of them been previously administered, at least partially administered. Definitely use those. Those are in the prep books. Use those. But the separate questions on topic in the Khan Academy website, writing and math are probably okay. I would avoid reading. And why I would avoid reading, it's just, you wanna stick with real, 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 real tests for reading because it's, it's very important that the question types and the language and the, the quality of the choices is accurate. So the only way you can do that effectively is with real tests. Okay, so more specific here on the, I think, there's around 20 questions in reading. Okay, so you are in that case where you are really running out of time. So a big chunkier score is that. So okay, now that we're there. And so you guess randomly. I don't know anything about your background or your experience with these types of tests or reading these passages or your experience if you're a native speaker or not. So it's hard to give really specific advice, but... Yeah, I just don't know enough about your particular situation to know what could be causing this. But, and also like, are you following an efficient strategy? I would say is the main thing. Like if you're, if you're spending time reading through the passage, underlining stuff, annotating it, thinking about it a bunch, and then going to questions, that's probably wasted time. You wanna go, as I talked about elsewhere, go right to the questions. Use those as a way to frame your reading of the passage. So maybe partly it's your overall strategy. I don't know though. I don't really know enough about your case. Because in the end, like the, the reading is tough. This goes back to like some of the previous questions we talked about. The reading is based on the reading that you've done since you started reading. It's a skill, right? It's like, it's like walking or breathing, kind of. It's not a great analogy, but you get the idea, right? It's something that you've done for a long time. It's not like math or grammar, which certainly are somewhat skill-based, but are very much content-based. There are rules you can learn for grammar. There's formulas and concepts you can learn from math. With reading, there is no such thing like that. There's no like a book of stuff that if you learned for reading, you'd be good on reading. It is literally wide open to the universe of every possible topic, almost every possible topic that you could read about. And it's about, and also the kind of universe of language, of vocabulary, of sentence structures. It's super complicated. It's really based on a long-term accrual of these skills and these understandings. So, again, I don't know your situation, but you might be bumping up against a very hardwired limit that's gonna take time. It's not just gonna improve instantly. It's going to take, you know, who knows, months, a year. I don't know where you're at in the test prep process. It depends on the person, depends on the situation, but it takes time. It doesn't improve quickly in many cases, for the reading in particular. So without knowing more about your situation, that's what I would say. Make sure your strategy is as tight and as efficient as it can be. And then it's just about continuing to practice and refine it and build that muscle of reading comprehension, which is something that takes time to, to put together. "Is there any way to read faster and focus better on the ACT? Because the last time I took the ACT, I ran out of time." I assume you mean, uh, I assume you mean the reading section? And so I talk about a lot of this in my videos. So check out my ACT reading playlist on YouTube. I go into a lot of details about time and time management, things like that. I will, I will say, reading faster as a goal is not much of a thing. Some people might teach like speed reading or things like that. I, I, first off, I'm super unconvinced that speed reading is actually a thing. I think it's a fancy way of saying skimming. And while skimming is a skill, skimming is not really gonna help you in this situation. So I wouldn't worry about reading faster. You're gonna read at a certain speed and that speed is very much based on a lot of factors, which are not something you can just change in a week. Instead, again, it kinda comes back to what I was saying with reading. It's about the strategy. Are you approaching the reading passages, as an example, in a reproducible, efficient, rational way? Or are you just going into it, seeing what happens? Read the passage, go to the questions and see what happens? I mean, just to give you an idea, like when I go to a reading test on the ACT, I know exactly what my game plan is to the letter. I mean, obviously the passage and the questions, I don't know what they're gonna be, but I know what I'm gonna be doing. And this is basically the idea. I open up the test book and an ACT reading. I skip passage one because fiction is my weakest. And I go to passage two because I wanna do my easier passages first. I go to passage two, I skim the passage in two to three minutes, looking for the main idea and the overall structure of the passage. I go to the questions, I do the line reference questions, then keyword questions, then general questions. I go to the questions, I do the line reference questions, then keyword questions, then general questions, and then time waster questions I do at the end. Then I do the same for passage three, same for passage four, same for passage one, and that's the routine. So it's a very, I know exactly how I'm going to approach these passages. And that's much more important, at least at the first move, than, um, trying to read faster. I mean, certainly speeding, reading speed matters, but that's not something we can control right away. Let's control what we can control, which is how we approach the passages and the questions and all that stuff. So focus on that. Focus on the overall approach and strategy, how you tackle questions, focusing on what, what's important and ignoring what's not. And that will make a lot bigger difference to your overall score, especially in the short term. So continuing on the previous conversation about reading, SAT reading, running out of time. Uh, there are many strategies that can help you with this, um, to some extent, but I think you're at the point, if you're literally running out of time with twenty questions, there's no strategy that's going to make you suddenly be able to answer those twenty questions. It goes back to what I was saying before. It's about a base reading ability, which takes time to improve. Um, you know, I can offer you some things that might help, but this is, these are types of strategies that can help on the margin. So we're talking about, you know, if you're missing five questions, how can we get to the point where maybe we can get those five questions in? Um, when you're at twenty questions, you're, you're in a different ballpark. So it's going to be, think, just like I was saying with the last person for the ACT reading, think about overall strategy. Think about your game plan. Think about your familiarity with question types and with passage types and with the choices, evaluating the choices. Get familiar with the trap answers. It's things like that which make more of a difference than like some artificial strategy of like, well, if you do this little trick, you'll finish ten minutes faster. Like that doesn't even really exist. And things like that, that do exist, aren't really going to matter. It's, don't worry, there is no, I'll put it this way, there's no secret trick that you're missing that will suddenly make you finish the test within like a day. You know, within a week of practicing. I can guarantee you there, no such thing exists. Uh, the reading really is about building that skill of reading, which takes time, it takes effort and takes practice. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. And that's why the reading section is hard. And if you're able to master it, then you'll have an advantage over your competitors, which is ultimately what you're looking for. Uh, hello to Nirparah. Sorry if I messed up your name. I'm really doing bad on the math section of the practice test. I assume you mean SAT. Try to learn the concepts a lot, but I don't get a lot of it because I have yet to take Algebra II. Um, what do you do? Take Algebra II? I mean, if you haven't taken Algebra II yet, I don't know what your grade is. Look, if you're in 10th grade right now and you're going to be taking Algebra II next year, unfortunately, it's just you have to wait until you take Algebra II in many cases, or at least get into it a little bit. Though I will say Algebra II maybe isn't as important as say Algebra I, linear algebra type stuff, as well as stuff you learned in middle school, percents, fractions, ratios, things like that. So I think certainly Algebra II is an aspect of it, but relatively limited, I think, because you do quadratics mostly in Algebra I. You do functions in Algebra I many times. So part of it is you have to take Algebra II. Part of it is make sure you're doing the best you can on the other stuff that isn't Algebra II. To build on that foundation. I answered this question previously, uh, so watch the previous part of this. And again, this stream will be, uh, up online immediately after. Khan Academy. So it wasn't helped for you, totally legitimate. Some people it is helpful for. Uh, you gotta try it and see what works. In terms of books, books by independent tutors, I recommend Erica Meltzer's Grammar and Reading books are generally well regarded, as is Pone the SAT Math, uh, by Mike McLennan, I think his name is. In any event, um, check those out and, uh, any books by independent tutors are generally could be pretty good. In the end, the whole book question is somewhat of a red herring. We're not going to be using the books for practice tests. The prac, the main practice material is real tests. Um, I guess some books have different strategies, which may be better than others. And so that's why, again, stick with the independent tutors. That's more effective, I think, than, you know, like Princeton Review Barron's type situation. Okay, so more background on that person before, uh, English medium school. I don't know what that means, uh, since birth. Okay, good. So you have that background. You have that, uh, English education, which is fantastic. Uh, so keep working at it. Uh, reading is a skill. It takes time to improve. Is there any set reading? Set order on the SAT reading. The fiction is the weakest. So the fiction passage is always the first one. Otherwise it's mixed up. You know there will be a dual passage, a history passage, a passage on science, and probably like a social science slash technology slash, yeah, type passage. But they're otherwise mixed up. So you know fiction's coming first, but otherwise you don't know what's coming later. So if fiction is your weakest, do it last. Do the others first and then come back to the fiction. On the ACT, it's much more well-defined. Let me go to some email questions here because I don't want to completely ignore emails. All right. Do that one. Okay. Well, I was going through some practice ACT science questions. I noticed there were a few questions that were not answerable from the info provided in the prep and passage. Do we have to know additional knowledge? Yes, uh, there is some additional knowledge you need to know, outside knowledge. Uh, the best source that I have for this is my own ACT science facts, what I call it. ACT Science Factoid Sheet. It's included in my ACT Science Bootcamp Course, which goes through, lists out the main, what I think are the main outside knowledge topics you need to know. It's not much, it's pretty thin, but it's stuff like, what is the pH scale? What is the formula for density? Basic genetics concepts, basic chemistry and physics concepts and formulas. Things like that that do seem to come up more often than not. Uh, I recommend, uh, checking, uh, that out on my site. There are prob, in the ACT Science Bootcamp, there are probably other resources out there. If you Google like ACT Science Outside Knowledge. But the most comprehensive source that I know of is in my Factoid Sheet. I'm sure other books probably have them as well. So there are maybe two, well, three to four questions thereabouts that might require some outside knowledge. That would be a place to, uh, get resources for that. Otherwise though, most of the questions can be answered with just, uh, reading, uh, with just the, the graph and the figure. Okay, um, this one I'm going to move here because this is sort of a personal one. Okay, question on essays. Oh wow, I really screwed this up. Okay, I screwed this up. But anyway, the basic, uh, question here was ways to improve on a SAT essay. Besides, uh, using the practice tests. So I have an official SAT essay course, which if you haven't seen already, check it out. It's free. Goes through how to analyze the passages. Otherwise you need to get feedback from someone, a tutor, a teacher, even friends to some extent might be helpful. Uh, I offer SAT essay grading on my site as part of my courses. But if you need to get feedback, you need to get outside feedback from someone who knows the test, who knows what they're looking for, who knows how to do this analysis. That's the most important thing, because it's going to be very hard for you to identify your own, your own issues. Jumping back into some chat questions. Can you go over the kinds of passages on the ACT? Sure. First one is literary narrative, which is basically like a fiction or memoir. Second is social science. Third humanities. Fourth, natural science. And it's always in that order. How to do combining, uh, questions in writing and language effectively? This one I'm, I'm going to have to get a specific example of. So I'm going to follow up with this person by email because that's probably going to require a more specific question. Um, what is this? I'm going to have to contact this person directly too, to find the source of this one. Uh, what's this question? Uh, this is too hard to look. I'm gonna, let me just do the chat questions first. Whoa. Cause I'm rushing because I have to actually leave in five minutes, which I started late, but it is a busy time. So I'll try to get through these and I'm going to have to contact the other people directly. So, hey, sir, I take ACT practice test and score twenty-four to twenty-six. I want to get above thirty. Is it possible? Sure, it's possible. It'll be hard, but it's possible. Um, I don't know how much that helps, because then in the end you have to go down and actually do the work and do the practice and do the time. But yeah, it's possible. It will just take some effort. So it's definitely worth trying. So if you haven't already, go ahead and get started. Can you show us how to finish a passage of SAT in thirteen minutes, the real time condition? So number one, I do go through passages in my reading courses in detail. However, I will never really be able to show you how to do it in thirteen minutes, because I can think faster than I can speak. Everyone can. So if I'm sitting here explaining my reasoning, it might take me two minutes to explain a question to you in detail why I'm doing it, um, which of course I wouldn't have to do in the real test because I'm thinking that. So it, I can't show the timing of it in thirteen minutes. I mean, I probably could finish in thirteen minutes if I were like, uh, going really fast. Uh, but in any event, check out, if you haven't already, my reading course. I've also have some reading videos on YouTube where I go through questions and passages, uh, in some detail. So, and that should help with that, uh, aspect. Hello, can I increase my English score by seven to eight points? Absolutely. And people who've used, I think someone mentioned later, my ACT English course is free on YouTube, but you should get it on my site. It's free. And people have used that to make big increases like seven to eight points on their English. So yeah, definitely possible. Check out my English course. What's a good SAT score? A good SAT score is one that gets you into the colleges that you're looking for. There's no objective, I mean, some scores are better than others because they get you into more competitive schools than others. Otherwise then the answer to this question would be the highest score, right? Um, so what's a good SAT score matters for you. What schools are you looking at? What fit your uh, GPA, your extracurriculars, your interests, all that stuff? So that a good score is one that puts you into the conversation, puts you into the running for a spot at that school. Uh, how is thirteen hundred for top seventy-five US universities, assuming an average GPA? If, the, the major issue there is the average GPA. I don't know what you mean by average. If you mean like top, well, average is middle fifty percent. So I, by average, I'm assuming you mean like, you know, top ten percent. Um, depends on the school. Would be tough, I'm guessing. I'm not, I'm not a college counselor, so I can't say for sure. But I would probably say that that looks to be tough. You, you definitely, especially with an average GPA, want to get the, uh, get the SAT slash ACT score up. Okay, three minutes. What is the order of the passages, fiction, et cetera, for ACT reading? So literary narrative, social science, humanities, natural science. All right, few more questions and then I'm going to wrap up. And I'll be having another live stream, probably sometime later next week. I'll announce it on my website, on YouTube, in my Reason Prep Facebook group, and to my email list, uh, when I do schedule that next one. So I do apologize for the abrupt session today, but uh, summer's insanely busy. I'm basically tutoring from nine AM more or less to, to six PM. So, um, and working, doing other things. So should I take the ACT and SAT in the same month, October, or should I spread the dates out? I haven't been really studying for the ACT. I would say pick one. I don't know where you're at in your prep schedule, if you're a junior or a senior. Either way, I would really focus on one. So pick one that you can prep for and then focus on that. You can take both, um, and then it doesn't matter. I guess you can take them in the same month, but really you want to prep for one. Pick one or the other and really put your energy into that. All right. Do you have any strategy? Or what I have to do for the writing section? Cause I've been suffering. So I'm assuming you mean SAT writing. I have a complete course for free on YouTube and my site for SAT writing. So check that out. Uh, there's no strategy. You gotta learn the grammar rules. If you don't know the grammar rules, no strategy will ever help, right? You need to know, uh, how commas work, dashes work, how, uh, colons work, how semicolon's work, subject gramm agreement, pronoun agreement, tense, misplaced modifiers, uh, all that stuff, right? You need to know that. And that's the, probably the main reason that you're struggling is you don't know a lot of those rules. So check out my writing course. I go through all that in a ton of detail. Is it worth going to US university after one hundred rank? Uh, yes. Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people do, and they go and they do perfectly well in their careers after. Uh, you don't need to go to a top one hundred school to be successful in life. I mean, obviously everyone's situation is different, but you can go to a school that's not top one hundred, top five hundred or top thousand, whatever, and do well. It's all about what you put into it. It's all about your interests, your passion. It's all about the work you put in. Obviously going to better universities help with connections and with the, the credentialing and all that kind of stuff. Can't deny that. But is that, I mean, I mean, I guess it depends. If you mean like, if you're an international student, is it worth going? Well, that might be a different question, um, involving finances and travel and things like that. You might have better opportunities in your country, but, um, for most people, yeah, it's going to be worth it because a lot of people do. There's only a limited number of spots really in those, uh, top one hundred. All right. Oh wow, it's twelve o'clock. I gotta go. Couple more questions. What does the SAT score say about my career? Nothing at all. Zero. Uh, once you get your SAT score and get into a college, no one cares about it ever again. And a general rule of thumb for people, don't let your scores define how you feel about yourself or your potential, your goals. SAT and ACT are in the, the long run, big jokes. They don't mean anything. Um, they're only important now for getting into the next step, but beyond that, they define absolutely zero about your worth as a person or your value or what you're going to do with your life. So that's my little soapbox speech. Uh, how important are ECs? Uh, very important. So I would, uh, get started now with some, so you can just have something to fill in. Okay, so sorry about the abbreviated, uh, session. I'm going to have another one sometime next week. So please check out my, uh, website, YouTube channel, Reason Prep Facebook group, or join my mailing list and you'll get information about that. All right. Talk to you all later and I will see you soon.